Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting, the Fourth of December. It'll be the last one this year, I believe. Mr. Giardinelli, I thought I saw him here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm here representing Canyon Lake Community Church in order to give you your vocation. So, is that what you called me up for?
Yes, if you would please, and if you could all stand, and if you're standing after work with the flags over there. Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are just so grateful for these men and women who are giving us their time and their treasures and their energy to make this a better community, Lord. We ask that you give them your blessing, that you guide them and give them wisdom, Lord, as they make decisions that impact and benefit all of us. In this time of Thanksgiving, we're so grateful for living in a community like Canyon Lake with all of the benefits that we have and the people that live here. And so, Lord, we just lift you up and we thank you for this and for all of the blessings in our lives. Amen.
Thank you. Would you be so kind as to give us another flag?
Another one. Thank you. Do it again.
Say with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Bonner?
Here.
Mayor Potem Castillo?
Here.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Aaron Grant?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Do we have anything to report on a closed session?
Mayor, we have nothing to report on a closed session.
Thank you very much. I'd like to have the approval of the City Council adjutant.
I will.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Well, our Students of the Month are not present, unfortunately, so perhaps next month we'll have some that'll be here. We're going to have community reports at this time. I believe. Captain Landeros?
Yes.
Okay, he was hiding back there to see you. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I'm honored that I was invited to speak here tonight. My name's Robert Landeros. I'm an adjunct professor of criminal justice, and I'm also a career law enforcement officer. I speak to you tonight as a educator and a Californian and a citizen of this country. And I've got some interesting facts to share with you tonight regarding the impact of homelessness for our Southern California communities. Over the course of my career as a law enforcement officer and an educator, I've not only researched homelessness, but seen it firsthand, and I've seen the significant changes in recent years and seen the challenges that not only our law enforcement committee faces, but just us as Californians are facing today. Here's the current situation. We have an increased homeless population, as we can see, as we travel our freeways. You see tent cities along the freeways all throughout Southern California. There's been numerous news reports, investigative reports conducted by various journalists. It's a hot topic right now nationally. Some of the areas concerned that I've seen are encampments in undeveloped areas. These impacted areas include parks and waterways. These areas are places where we and our families go and enjoy time, bike paths, lakes, rivers. I've seen frustration from residents impacted by encampments, increased health risks, not only to homeless population, but to the residents that live near these areas where the homeless have chosen to reside, and a significant fire risk. Homeless people build fires to keep warm and to cook food, and unfortunately, sometimes these will spiral out of control into wildfires. There's pretty much a universal response of all law enforcement agencies across California. This city where you all reside is fortunate enough to be serviced by the County of Riverside. And in the research I've conducted and what I've observed over the years, the County of Riverside has been very aggressive and progressive regarding their approach to homelessness and to identifying outreach services. So, your local law enforcement agencies throughout California have taken pretty much the same model. We form outreach teams, we partner with other agencies, neighboring agencies, not only law enforcement, but health departments, departments of mental health, and various nonprofit groups to try to get shelter and services to the homeless residents of our community. We also want to get them medical services. There's a lot of folks out there that are suffering, and that suffering does spread. You know, the health issues, we all end up being impacted one way or another, no matter where we live. You know, there's a lot of debate, you know, no matter where anybody sits on the political spectrum, the homeless crisis is a humanitarian issue. Some of the causes, and I've watched this firsthand, great recession, drug and alcohol abuse, mental illness, increased housing costs, and lack of long-term mental health facilities. And these are the discussions that occur amongst law enforcement and educators and those social workers and other members who are on the front lines of basically trying to resolve this homeless crisis. It's not just one cause. This is just a collective group of causes, and most of the folks I've seen firsthand out there have experienced all of this, parts of it. No matter how you look at it, it's a crisis that needs to be addressed. Some of the significant impact that we've seen at the local level, everybody here is familiar with all the growth and development that we've seen in California, and we're blessed to have such a robust economy. Unfortunately, law enforcement statewide has not kept up with this growth. Whether it be local police departments, sheriff's departments, and state law enforcement agencies, we just haven't kept up with the growth. That's the issue that you'll see in various headlines. And in the course of providing services to a local community, law enforcement agencies tend to be the fixers. You know, our sheriff's deputies are out there, and city police officers that are out there. You know, the only government agency that exists that you can dial three numbers is a police or sheriff's department. And you can actually talk to somebody. Most government entities like our health departments and mental health agencies, they're not 24/7 operations. So, the police and sheriff's departments across California have become the de facto leaders in addressing the homeless issues. Because we see it firsthand, we talk to these folks, we try to get them resources, and at times, we arrest them. But one thing we have learned is that we can't arrest our way out of this problem. The homeless issue isn't, it's not like a crime wave, not like, you know, if you get a bunch of burglaries, car thefts, you know, we're very well-equipped to deal with that and resolve that. But this crisis is just so widespread that police can't, sheriff's departments can't do it alone. Some of the changes in laws have had an impact, Prop 47, Prop 57, and AB 109. Local law enforcement agencies have been the ones saddled with this. And in order to provide those services, those outreach teams, you know, it takes away officers and deputies away from policing. They're out there trying to bring outreach to homeless people and try to get them off the streets. This is where, in the same Canyon Lake, obviously, in the name of it, you have a lake in your community, a waterway. This is from a local riverbed here in Southern California that I've been out onto many times with homeless teams and enforcement teams. Looks like, from this perspective, it looks like, you know, a pretty quiet waterway that we've seen throughout, we see in various parts of California. But if you go a little bit closer, these encampments are all up and down our waterways throughout California. Obviously, sources of water in human history, people settle by water. They settle by rivers because water is life. And so, for the homeless populations out there, it's secluded, and it's easy to set up, and you have that water to sustain you. So, throughout, in this particular area, there's a bike path, that's a county park that, you know, kids and families, I used to ride that bike path as a teenager, and there's encampments all along that path. And this story is a story that is in many communities across California. You can see the pathways, you know, to the riverbed, they camp along there, they collect their water. In addition to living alongside the riverbed, it pollutes the water. And I'm not speaking as a water expert, but as a consumer of our water resources, I want our water, our surface water, as clean as possible. And I know, you know, our sources of water are filtered through various aquifers, rocks, and filtration system, but at the end of the day, we want to live in a clean environment. We want our environment clean so our families can enjoy it. Fire risk. This, we've seen homeless residents, you know, homeless people, and they've been referred to as unsheltered residents, unsheltered citizens, but the homeless population, they'll do various things to survive, to try to, you know, generate funds to pay for food. This particular individual was using this pan to smelt lead that was collected from an old gun range that's been closed for many years. So, homeless residents would dig in the mounds to pull out lead, bullets, and melt them and smelt them to recycle them. And here's some of the lead that was collected. You have weapons, you know, sometimes these homeless encampments, you get convicted felons, people who have basically supported themselves by committing crimes, in addition to mentally ill residents and people who have significant health problems. Some of the encampments are very elaborate. They use old military-type tents, they spend, they'll acquire things in trash cans, things that get donated to them by nonprofit groups to help them survive. I've seen barbecues, generators, out there in the, they'll fire up generators and run hundreds of feet of cable through a brush, which is an obvious risk factor for fires. Some of these tents, cities are very large, and they have quite a few people living in them. It's shocking when you walk through them and you see how many items some of these homeless people can collect. This is across California, not only California, but various states, more elaborate encampments. People band together, survive. This is a very large one. All of these encampments have now been cleaned up off of a joint effort from federal, local, and state agencies. So, what's next? We really have to take a look at ourselves as a society, what we need to examine our current legislation at the state level and see what can be done to mitigate this crisis. It's not just one thing out there, it's not just the affordability of houses. A lot of the folks out there, you can hand them a house, and they'll end up right back to where they're at in their encampments. It's a mental health crisis, it's a health crisis. And that's really what we need to identify this as. It's a healthcare emergency, we want to approach this crisis, one community can't do it on their own. It's going to take multiple communities, multiple agencies banding together at a regional level. Again, your state's very fortunate to be serviced by the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and they have a lot of, they set a good standard for law enforcement to address these types of issues. We need to protect our public areas, water sources in our communities, and don't wait to respond. Really, the key to this is a balance of enforcement and outreach. It's enforcement with some common sense and compassion by the deputies and officers that are out there, and in a combination with outreach from social workers and the healthcare community. And the hard part is getting all those groups together to have a unified front. And so, when you see homeless people out there, if you see an encampment coming, don't wait, because these encampments grow extremely quick. If you can identify somebody that needs help, do everything possible, both as elected officials and appointed officials, to get these folks to the resources to get them out of these Questions?
Thank you so much for coming. I did have a couple questions. You mentioned, sorry, you mentioned the response time. What kind of difficulties have you experienced in terms of the eradication of encampments? It looks like those are pretty well-settled.
Well, there's a lot of factors that come into play, and, you know, in speaking with you tonight, like I said, I speak with you not as a citizen and as an educator and a professional law enforcement officer. You know, the tough thing is, is being able to address this and navigating the various court rule, case law that exists, and statutes regarding enforcement of laws. You know, our drug laws, you know, have changed over recent years, and so, it really is a delicate approach from a law enforcement perspective. So, those are some of the challenges, and that can be time-consuming if you solely look at the homeless crisis as a law enforcement issue. But if you take it as, address it as a healthcare issue, as a mental health issue, and really push that as the lead with law enforcement support, that kind of cuts the time. You know, if we're just going to wait for the, you know, dial 911, have the police go solve it, or the sheriff's department, that's not a solution that is highly effective. It really is a team effort.
I have one more question. Our lake is a drinking water reservoir, and I know you had mentioned that there was water quality issues that you had dealt with personally. What kinds of impact did you see, and do you have any suggestions?
Well, again, as a, I'm not a water treatment expert or a water filtration expert by any means, but I do, some of the things I have seen, human feces in bags floating on surface water, trash, food products, plastics, metals, just various types of garbage thrown out there in the water and disposed of by homeless people. Sometimes, you'll get these encampments, you know, that get abandoned, you get a rainstorm that comes in, and it just spreads out the trash everywhere. The important thing is getting abandoned encampments cleaned out as soon as possible, and really, really making it a community effort to identify, you know, if somebody's living along the waterways, and there's a lot of places to hide, and I didn't think there was, in this particular community, I didn't think there were that many places to hide, and I thought it was, it would be pretty easy to identify encampments. Then, once you get on the ground and you start hiking through these places, a lot of the homeless people are very resourceful in avoiding attention by passersby, by hikers, fishermen, and such. So, that's going to be an important thing, is making it a community effort to identify homeless encampments, and really get on it early, and notify your local law enforcement, because law enforcement has been tasked with, you know, basically being the project manager for the homeless crisis in all the counties and cities across California.
Any other questions, council? I have one. You said earlier that don't wait, don't call 911, or don't wait for law enforcement. What would you suggest that somebody would do if they came upon one of these encampments? I mean, you're not going to confront the residents, I don't think, are you?
No, I don't recommend that. Obviously, your law enforcers aren't going to recommend that. And when I meant don't wait, you know, I want to, if it's somebody that, you know, something that needs to be addressed right away, obviously, you want to call your law enforcement. But for the overall solution, it's got to be that team effort. So, if there's a resident, you come across a homeless shelter, obviously, you want to, or homeless encampment, you want to call your local law enforcement so they can coordinate whatever resources need to get there. Because there's a combination of things that can happen at these encampments. You're going to get a criminal that's hiding out, that's doing drugs and stealing from cars. You have that element that I've seen. Then, you also have people with severe mental illness and other health problems that are living out there suffering. And both those situations require different things. The criminal that's out there hiding that's on parole, obviously, that's going to be more of an enforcement issue. That homeless person that's dealing with a health crisis, obviously, medical issue. Law enforcement are the ones that get eyes on first to deem the area safe, to get those resources in there. So, obviously, always call your local law enforcement. But to depend on local law enforcement to solve this overall problem, that's not the total solution.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? Well, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
We're having a census update?
Yes, ma'am.
While we're waiting for that to load up, mayor, council, staff, residents, thanks for letting me come into the chamber tonight and address you guys, and tell you a little bit about what's going on with the 2020 census. I'm Gladie Robinson, I'm your partnership specialist, I'm the proponent of being your partnership specialist. And what that means is, we try to forge a partnership with the cities and the municipalities, the residents, community-based, faith-based organizations in your community, to try to enhance the engagement with the 2020 census. So, this is the mission statement for the 2020 census, count everybody, count everybody once and in the right place. Sounds pretty simple, but there's nothing trivial about that at all. This is why we do the census. It's mandated in the U.S. Constitution in Article 1, Section 2, key purposes for the apportionment of the U.S. House of Representatives. What this illustrates here, what this chart illustrates is how the apportionment is done. What's not recognized on this chart is that due to the woeful undercount of the 2010 census, California is on the verge of losing one, possibly two representatives. What gets you past the so what on that is that you have to have those representatives to go to the Hill to advocate and try to get these monies to come back down into the communities at the state and local levels. That's a little bit of an eye chart, but what this one is representing is that over on the left-hand side is all of the programs that federal funds augment and supplement or either directly pay for, medical assistance programs, infrastructure, roads, highways, bridges, Pell Grants, block grants, you name it, there's, I think there's 150 different bins or buckets of money that federal dollars go into, and how that's apportioned out is all derived from census data. The one over on the right-hand side, that's the, that's the bigfoot stomper right there. Seventy-six point six billion is looked to come, is to come back to the state of California. That's per capita, $2,000 per head. And then, you multiply that over a 10-year period, because another census won't be done until the next decennial. So, that comes out to be, you know, you have to take off your shoes, do that one, you're talking about seven point, almost eight trillion dollars coming back to the state of California over a 10-year period. That's still real money even in today's economy. What this chart illustrates to you is, they go down and they drill down into a deeper level when they start to do the demographics. So, we make sure that all the monies are going to the right places, and that those particular demographics are being fairly represented. The only way they can be fairly represented is by getting that accurate count that we talked about earlier. Riverside County, this is where we live. If you look at the outlined border that goes around that, you have two point, almost 2.5 million people that live in Riverside County, including us. That land mass of the Riverside County is the size of the state of New Jersey. So, what that tells you is that out to the east, we have hard-to-count areas because it's more rural, sparsely populated, with sprinklings of Indian reservations and off-rivers and those types of people that aren't really interested in being counted. That's money left on the table, so we have to get it counted. Out here on the west side, we're more densely populated. That brings new challenges, because counting people in those densely populated areas, like Captain Landers was discussing, we have homeless, we have a lot of other populations and densely impacted areas that is going to be difficult to count. And so, that's why we have to get engagement, a better engagement with the local communities to get the complete count committee stood up, to get a higher level of engagement with the Census Bureau. This is what I do, this is what I'm here for, and that's to enroll the community partners, educate you, encourage you, and then engage at grassroots level. We talked a little bit earlier about the community-based organizations, the faith-based organizations, and the businesses, and the local residents that live in your community to get them engaged so we can get that count. Once again, every head that does not get counted, that's $2,000 that you left on the table, over a 10-year, expended over a 10-year period. Complete count committees, this is what I'm going to try to encourage you to do. I know that we can't really do that right now, we have to look at resources available, who's going to chair it, what your level of interest is, but this is what I would hope to be able to, to get you to want to do, to make a proclamation and stand up a complete count committee and develop a solid partnership with the Census Bureau for the 2020 census. There's going to be a new ability to respond, starting in March of next year. You're going to be able to respond via the Internet, the phone, that's a generational thing. When I say phone, a lot of people think, oh, there's going to be an app for that, I can do it on my iPhone. No, it's call your friendly operator at the Census Bureau, you can conduct the survey over the phone, the good old-fashioned bubble sheet paper form, fill it out. Or, if you fall into that non-response category, then there's going to be the enumerator that's going to come out and knock on the door and survey you in person. We're going to talk a little bit more about that. Two big questions that came up for this year's, for this decennial census, the citizenship status is not going to be on the survey. It was struck down by the Supreme Court, and it's just not going to happen. Protecting your information, everybody's worried about that. We don't, a day does not go by that we do not read the paper about some company spilled your data, or sold your data, or your data was pirated. The information that's collected in the decennial census, say that three times fast, is protected and cannot be released for 72 years. Census workers, like myself, we take a lifetime. It's not just during my tenure as a Department of Commerce or a census employee, I take a lifetime oath to protect your data. And if I get caught violating that, it's a $250,000 fine or five years in prison or both. I don't have either one to give up, so I'm going to protect your data. Languages that are going to be supported, the population's obviously going to be available in Spanish and across the United States, and then it comes down to, what is the predominant non-English-speaking languages that are spoken in those particular areas, and there's going to be a higher concentration and more materials and handouts that are going to be in those languages. Eventually, it's going to span out to 59 different languages across California. And technology, this is going to be the most technologically advanced census to date. The enumerators and the other field operatives that are going to be out there, they're going to have iPads, and they're going to be able to drill down into those iPads and find whatever language that you're comfortable with, or whatever your native language is, and you'll be able to conduct the survey in your comfortable native language. So, here's the key dates, this is where we started, and then coming up to where we are right now. 2019 has been a lot of heavy lifting on getting area census offices stood up, getting people hired. The hiring is going to be in the millions nationwide, and we're hiring in the tens of thousands just here in the Southern California area. And once again, I'm going to bring my colleague up, and she's going to talk a little bit about that. Census Day is on April 1. People that did not fill out the survey prior to April 1, then the enumerators are going to come out, and wherever you are laying your head, that is where you're going to be counted on April 1. Another thing, too, to tag on what Captain Landers was talking about, we're standing up task force, and we know that group quarters and other hard-to-count areas were woefully underlooked or undercounted last time, so we're not going to let that happen again. The state of California is investing $90 million of its own money at the state level that will filter out as grants to make sure that we get a more complete count this year. to make sure that we get a more complete count this year. If I left off any other big pieces, like I said, you know, tagging on to what Captain Landers was talking about, we're going to develop task force that are going to be focused on just doing that, counting the homeless and some of these other difficult and hard-to-count groups of individuals. So now I can turn it over to the fun part. I'm going to bring in my colleague. She's going to talk about the, about what's going to go on with the actual ground operation starting in the springtime. And then also the job opportunities that are available to you are going to be available right now. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly.
Hi, I'm Ellen. Hi, everybody. Thank you. Hi, I'm Kelly Robertson. I'm your local recruiter here. I actually live in Menifee. So I recruit from Menifee, the rural areas, Quail Valley, Roanoke, Waldemar Lake, Elsinore, and Canyon Lake. So, did you give everybody like one of these guys here? So really, my little color chart that you're going to get, green means go. So that means I've been able to recruit 80 to 100% of what I was told to recruit. That's at a pay grade way above me. If you see any orange on there, these are just areas surrounding Canyon Lake. I just focused on Canyon Lake. Orange is 50 to 79%. And then I wanted to make maximum impact, so I'm showing you a picture of Canyon Lake on both sides in red. It's not really all that bad news. It means that 0 to 49% of your Census workers that need to do all that work have been recruited. So I've been personally recruiting here in the area since, I think, May 23rd. Green is pretty good. I'm doing pretty good. But Canyon Lake is red because when I go to the center and I go to the POA and say, introduce myself, they direct me to the city. I go to the city, they direct me to POA. People have even told me to go see Debbie at the post office because she's like really cool and everybody knows her at the Chamber, go to the Friday Flyer. I mean, I am kind of kidding, you know, but not really. So I would really like to see Canyon Lake residents make $17 to $18.50 an hour. I get paid every Wednesday with a telephone interview. And so I've been able to recruit 19 out of 75 positions. So I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot. And it's very easy to get hired. It's age 18 to no max age. My colleague proves that you could be an old guy. Should I say that? And get hired. Okay, that's me too. But I've really enjoyed it and I do feel I'm doing something important for the nation. And it's actually a great opportunity for some people. There is a lot of bias in hiring. We all know it. And with a telephone interview, there is none. So it's kind of a neat break for people. I know I have moms at home or we have retired people like me. I'm retired. I get paid once a month. I love getting paid every Wednesday. That Wednesday comes up right on time. So I need 66 people ASAP. Or if you look at my cool little thing that I printed today, you'll see that you'll literally be, have Census workers in Canyon Lake from January until the end of June. That's what it ends officially, from the areas that I've been successful in recruiting in. And you guys know what areas that is. So I know your neighbors would be more comfortable with neighbors. So 19's pretty good, but I need more okay. So I just would ask for you to like to consider, you don't have to like spend a lot of time on it, but when I go to say Debbie at the post office or wherever I'm supposed to go, I don't need like a party or anything, but if they would know that it's okay that I maybe pass the post a flyer. Many can't even get in the library. It's not really open on that often, but libraries are kind of good for me. I've tried to ask if I can have events outside because, you know, like the library, for example, doesn't have a whole lot of room. I get it. And everybody just tells me no. I went to the golf course and to the pro shop and to the country club. And they turned me down. And I don't live inside, so I can't get inside to see if I can party near. So if you'd like to, you know, think of something for me or, I just need one thing. I need 75 people and as long as it's advertised and we can do that on Eventbrite. You know, if you can just think of something, that'd be really fun. And I don't have any gifts, but I could get them a job. And I really appreciate your helping out very much. Thank you.
I have a question. From January to June, how many hours are required?
Very good question, sir. Well, we do have part-time jobs as age 18 to no max age. So they know that they're going to have to, you know, work things out. 20 hours is what they're kind of looking for. That's what supervisors are looking for at a minimum. But we do have to go to a lot of areas that are not highly populated. I don't go to too many rural areas because the more densely populated areas that have more Census workers kind of take care of that for us. So...
Excuse me, when you say 20 hours?
Yes, sir. 20 hours a week. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. 40 is the max. Federal employment, you know, we're looking at the clock all the time. So 40 is the max. They have offered overtime. Last time, we actually had Census workers from Riverside go to Portland. I guess that was a hard place to get people to work for the government, truly. And Las Vegas because of a thing called a sheriff's card background check and things like that. So Census does a background check, so they paid for it. So, you know, if somebody wants to work a whole lot, they can. You get an SF 50 at the end. That's pretty cool. So you can prove that you've worked for the federal government. And then maybe you can go to USAJobs.gov and throw in your experience and get a really neat job from that. That would be a great end.
So you're here recruiting tonight then, right?
Yes, sir. Yes. So I'm really, there's a lot more to it. There's five jobs you can apply for online. I have great coaching tips waiting for that, things that I've told that I can tell people. And it pays $17 to $18.50 for field work. That's what, we have a lot of jobs for office and recruiters, not too many jobs. But field jobs, we have a lot. For Canyon Lake, we have 75 right now today. And they might change that. They change it. It depends on how we do in the surrounding areas or what other leaders decide. I'm not sure how they figure all that out. So those numbers do change, but I did check today. We have 19 out of 75 positions in Canyon Lake. Just for Canyon Lake, not even zip 92587 because, as you know, that involves another city or so. And I'd really like to get those other 66 people. I really would.
Mr. Mayor? If I may?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sure we can put some information out. If you'd like me to provide links or material to our city clerk, we can push it out on our website and our city's social media. Also, if you happen to be free tomorrow evening from 4 to 9, I'm sure we could arrange for you to have a table at our Winter Wonderland and Tree Lightning Ceremony and recruit people who are coming tomorrow.
Okay, really? Yeah, that'd be great. I'll bundle up. Yes. Thank you so much. I appreciate that opportunity. Thank you, everybody. I'll send. Thank you. I'll let you know how that goes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Chamber of Commerce, do we have any announcements of Mr. Randall?
Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens, we're actually kind of dark this month, but we do want to put our foot out on our golf tournament coming up, March 21st. Letters are going to be out for Save the Date. Last year, we had 120 golfers. We're trying for 140 this year. We'd like to sell it out if we can. But other than that, I hope everyone has happy holidays and start all over after the first.
Good. Well, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
I have one more item under Community Reports which is not on your agenda. And we have a special guest here tonight, Mr. Michael Boyd, Deputy District Attorney. And he wanted to step up and give a little information.
Yes, I won't give a closing argument, but I wanted to tell you that I'm here. Good evening, Mayor, City Speaker, Council. My name is Michael Boyd. I'm a Deputy District Attorney for the Riverside County DA's office. I've been there seven years. Currently assigned to the Marietta Courthouse doing DUI, DUI, injury, and arson cases. The reason why I'm here tonight is to first introduce myself. Earlier this year, DA Mike Hestron had elected to undergo what they call a community action team. So we have DAs that are throughout the county, assigned to particular cities and communities. Canyon Lake, we're talking Menifee, Paris, you name it. And we meet internally once a month to go over any issues that are coming up with various cities and features such as homelessness. I know that's been a heavy topic for other communities as well. I'm here to let you know that I am your liaison. So if you want something addressed by the DA, I know cultivation of marijuana has been another hot topic, probably not with really Canyon Lake. That's more of a desert area. But if you guys want anything, even trains for law enforcement that are responding to, some of our office to help, that's what we're here for. So if there's anything that you guys can think of, I know I email, I harass Chris and Steve once a month by sending emails. That's what they tell me to do at the office. So I'll get those monthly emails. But if there's anything that you feel like DA Mike Hestron should be aware of, any issues with the community, you want to talk about Part 1, I could talk about how terrible AB 109 and 117 have, I could sit here for hours talking about that. But if there is any issues, please let us know so that we can address them, any concerns you have.
Do you have business card?
I do, yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mayor, of course. One of the things, because we are a small city, we obviously look at cost and cost recovery for us.
Yes.
A lot of times, we incur toll fees and additional things associated with DUIs. And my understanding is that we need some kind of an agreement with the court in order for us to file for those costs to be returned that we incur because whether it's a blood draw or they had had their vehicle towed or impounded, those fees are passed directly back to us. Is there a mechanism for that?
That's probably going to be over my pay grade, but I will inform you that in terms of DUIs, we always have booking fees. That probably is not dealt with it, I know. I haven't actually seen it in courts in which they're requesting fees back from defendants. The only thing I see is booking fees, which are generally amount of $500. And those are generally can be waived, but of course, I know in terms of, there's been a lot of case law recently on what you can really enforce an indigent defendant to pay. But in terms of that specific question, I'll be happy to run it up the fly pole and get back to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I could just inquire just briefly, so Canyon Lake, if there is a DUI arrest that occurs within the confines of Canyon Lake, obviously there's a tow truck driver that will tow the vehicle and that vehicle at Canyon Lake's expense?
That's correct.
Okay. And then for a blood draw as well for the phlebotomist, actually, you guys get billed for that as well?
That's correct.
And bio-tox.
And biotox. I know we get charged for biotox as well.
Yeah. And we've asked, could those be passed through back to the person? And we were told that there had to be an agreement between the city and the court because our law enforcement agency does not enter into that realm.
Okay. Yes. If I can get your email, or maybe I'll shoot you an email. We could be, we interact without...
I can actually send it to the city manager.
Okay.
That would work out best.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely. We're going to move on to public safety updates.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so I will be talking about the stats for October. So in October, we had 480 calls. That was up from 421, so an increase of 59. And then during the month of October, we had six Part 1 crimes. So it was an increase of, I think we only had one or two last month. But there was one robbery. This is a bit unfortunate because neither one of them lived here. They were just picked a spot to do a, trade some clothes, and he stole her cell phone. It was a boyfriend-girlfriend thing. So it's kind of unfortunate that they decided to stop on Railroad Canyon. The two assaults were both domestic violence related. The burglary was known suspect to the victim. And the larceny theft, one was cash stolen off a dresser. The suspect is known to the victim. And then there was a thermostat stolen out of a boat. We also made one public intoxication arrest. We had 21 traffic or parking citations. We made one DUI arrest, and there was one traffic collision. The sites, there was quite an increase there, so I took a look at that. They were all for parking violations, registration violations, things like that. The deputy that worked there said he noticed the same cars parked all over the town as they enter up and down Railroad Canyon. So he decided, you know, I'm going to go through them and clean them all out. So that's what most of that was. Is there any questions?
Seven arrests total, including the citations?
Yes, so there were two domestic violence arrests, one for the 245, which is an aggravated assault, 647F. And we had, which that's a public intoxication, one for assault, and then it was a felony warrant. Yeah, so the numbers don't actually add up there because the warrants kind of throw it off. All right.
I do have one question. On an injury traffic accident, what priority do you guys put that as?
So it depends on what we get reported. It usually comes out, we get them as either a Priority 1 or a Priority 2, depending on the information that we receive.
Priority 2 is Code 2?
Yes.
Priority 1 is Code 3?
Yes. For the most part, it kind of depends on what we get. I mean, there are times we will go to injury where it's a bit vague. We will roll Code 3.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Fire Department. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and the public. I'm here to talk or to answer any questions for the November stats. We had a total of 52 calls. They were no significant incidents for the month of November. And if there's any questions on the documents that you provided or you haven't answered.
Questions?
Thanks, Joe.
All right, thank you very much.
Not easy. Thank you. Special Code Enforcement.
We had a relatively busy month so far for business licensing. We've already processed 78 renewals as the renewal letters did go out. I did want to remind that the final notice will be going out on January 3rd and that will have the late fees so that it encourages everybody to pay on time, reminding them that the late fees aren't a pretty fee. I did notice that the vehicle decals have gone up significantly. So we're actually starting to see more of those going out. I think having amended our ordinance this year to reflect the need for the business license or the decal helped with that. Everything else was business as usual. We're still seeing vehicles on the BLM land. The good news is they're not always the same vehicles. So that seems to be going down a little bit with education. I'm hoping that's why. We have our last session remaining, and we have our tree lighting ceremony tomorrow. Any questions?
On the camping and fires, what were those?
The camping prohibited are tents. And these two particular tents, they were like literally people thinking they could camp on BLM land. And so two of those had fires because they figured it's not fire season anymore so that they would be good. That was strictly education. But again, because we're out there every day and we have BLM rangers that help and Riverside County Parks and Rec tries to make their area Bikini Park a priority, it's just, it doesn't last for very long. The fun is ended quickly. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Thank you for keeping up on that.
One last thing I just wanted to remind the community. Vector control, vector season is over. It's too cold for mosquitoes right now. So pools aren't going to be treated until it gets up above 73 degrees again. But there's still open cases until they move...
Thank you. Thanks, Jane. Anyone here from AMR? Animal Friends of the Valley? Then we're going to move... Then we're going to move on to, you have to listen to me for a little bit. Give you a presentation on the, a brief presentation, actually summarizing the work your city council and staff have been doing on your behalf over the past year. As soon as the slideshow is ready, I'm going to get ready. In the meantime, or anytime during the presentation, there are coffee and donuts back there in the back of the table, please help yourself. Okay. Well, I'm going to start off by telling you that while many cities put on an annual state of the city event. In recent years, mayors of Canulae have simply given a state of the city update at a city council meeting or in an article published in the Friday Flyer. While I'll be continuing that practice tonight, I'm also pleased to announce that starting next year, the city will begin hosting an annual state of the city event. In fact, next year, being the 30th anniversary of Canulae's city event, we plan to incorporate the state of the city event into a 30th anniversary gala to be held in December of 2020. 2019 has been a year of change and of tremendous progress for the city of Canulae. First of all, the city council got two new members. And I'm sure that you know who they are. They're sitting on either side of me, not exactly on either side, but Jeremy Smith and Casey Castillo have been fantastic additions to the council. They've thrown themselves into their new roles, bringing enthusiasm and fresh ideas to the city. Then we also had a search for a new city manager, and that activity was, was formed consisting of Mayor Larry, Larry, excuse me, Larry Green and Councilman Jeremy Smith. We had 34 applicants, two rounds of interviews. And as you can see, Chris Mann was selected as contract approved on March 6th. While this council's job is to set policy and to determine the vision and goals of the city, the city manager is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city. Having the right city manager in place is critical to the successful implementation of the policies, visions, and goals set by the council. Kind of got ahead of myself a little bit, but I'm not going to repeat what I said, other than we did a very great job in selecting a new city manager. Most of these accomplishments that you'll see here the rest of the evening has been thanks to his participation in most of these things. So I'm just ahead of the living a little bit. So now we're going to start with the new building department. We transitioned from Charles Abbott Associates to Inner West Consulting Group. The city is historically contracted for building department services, including counter technician, plant check inspections, and building official services. Over the past few years, the city had contracted with Charles Abbott to provide these services. Always looking to find ways better to serve the public, the city entered into an agreement with Inner West Consulting Group in December of last year. Transitioning the staffing of an entire department proved to be a significant undertaking, which was required adjustments by the city, by Inner West, and by the public. However, now a year into this new contract, I think it's safe to say that our relationship with Inner West has helped the city to provide a more professional level of service in the building department. We're doing a better job of keeping the community safe by ensuring that the state building codes are adhered to. We also have a new city attorney. Aside from the city manager, the city attorney is the only other position hired directly by the city council. Early in the year, the city council directed the city manager to negotiate a new contract with Cole Hooper, the law firm which had provided city attorney services to the city for many, many years. The new deal that was negotiated not only resulted in a significant cost savings for the city, but it called for a change in city attorneys from Betsy Martin to Stephen Graham. City council and staff have been very pleased with the work Stephen Graham has been doing over the past few months. His willingness to be creative, his outside-of-the-box thinking, and his ability to work well with all parties have already proven to be of tremendous benefit to the city. We have some new administration offices. Now we didn't. In the spring of vacancy in the building directly to the south of the main city hall building, provided an opportunity to expand into much-needed additional office space. Our space in the existing city hall building was cramped. We literally did not have room to add a single intern. Our enforcement department worked out of a room the size of a large closet, which could not even accommodate a landline phone service. We had no place that, that could adequately accommodate important meetings. The city quickly jumped on the opportunity to occupy the new office space. Securing a lease agreement in April, we moved our administrative functions to the new space, allowing the enforcement department and office specialists to expand into the existing space. Today, enforcement, business licenses, building department, and pine department services are provided in the main city hall building. The offices of the city manager, administrative service manager, city clerk, finance, and our WR cog fellow are housed in the new administration offices. The new office space also has a conference room and two workstations for interns. Finally, having adequate office and meeting places has increased morale as well as productivity. It has contributed significantly to the rapid rate at which the council and staff have been able to meet stated goals. Here's our city council goals. With two new elected council members, a new city manager, and a new city attorney, the city council held a goal-setting workshop in May in order to identify priorities for the remainder of 2019. This is a list of goals that were established at that time. As you will see in this presentation, significant progress has been made this year toward most of those goals. This process of setting goals for the year will be repeated in January of 2020 and every January thereafter. And I'll read these goals, if you don't mind, starting with number one. Address budget deficit and public safety contracts. Update computers, phones, data storage, and records retention. Adopt and implement updated fees. Implement fire code enforcement program. Update the general planned housing element. Contract with a traffic engineer. Bring on a grants consultant. Enhance relationship with the POA. Build positive regional relationships. Add residential rentals and other short-term vacation rentals to a business license program. Establish internship program. Secure BLM land for economic development. Update the general plan or zoning ordinance. Move the city council chambers upstairs. Update inventory of city assets, develop and adopt a filming ordinance, review standing committees, and put on city-sponsored movie market nights. That's just a short list. Now we have accomplishments of the regional relationships. And I'd like to go through a list of items that were accomplished in 2019. I'm going to move fairly quickly through these items, otherwise we'll be here all night. One of the main goals established by the city council was to build positive regional relationships. Among those lines, another goal was specifically to enhance the city's relationship with the POA. We've come a long way in accomplishing these goals. We've held successful joint meetings of the city council and the POA board. Addressed the longstanding speed limit on the lake issue, updated municipal code chapter, oh, third, excuse me, 11.08. Worked with the POA and EVMWD to revise our stormwater SSO procedure. Sold a city enforcement boat to the POA for marine patrol use. Held monthly roundtable meetings with the POA, EVMWD, Sheriff's Department, and the Fire Department. Attended League of California Cities Division meetings and the League's annual conference. Joined with other cities in the region on the I-25 task force. Tour EVMW facilities that serve Canulae residents. Currently working on the development of a diplomatic outreach season, program, excuse me. Now we have some accomplishments of the economic development. We contracted with economic development consultant Bill Blankenship. Officially started the process of acquiring BLM land. Met with BLM field manager Doug Arima, Arima, excuse me. Claimed and gained clear understanding of required steps. Submitted letters of interest on both parcels, received a response with a case number. Met with Riverside County Conservation Authority, which is the RCA, to understand habitat conservation requirements. Met with Congressman Ken Calvert, verified his support, and discussed strategy. Identified an environmental consultant in the process of setting up an initial meeting. Identified parcels the city may consider acquiring for future development. Working with the POA to explore options for the village overlay site. Applied for SV2 planning grant funding to be used for the development of a specific plan on the town-centered property. Here are some of the accomplishments from the enforcement. Increased enforcement of the city's business license program. Updated the city's animal control ordinance. Adopted a new enforcement equipment policy, providing for the use of body armor, pepper spray, and tasers for the protection of the enforcement staff. In the process of establishing a residential rental registration, in the process of establishing a residential rental registration, inspection and crime-free housing program to encourage the upkeep of all single-family rental properties for the public health, safety, and welfare of Canulae residents. And we're currently drafting an ordinance that will place a prohibition on short-term vacation rentals. Here are some of the accomplishments of the building department. Renegotiated the original Inner West contract, saving the city over $15,000 a month. Made staffing and procedural adjustments to provide better customer service while keeping costs down. Enforced strict adherence to the state's building codes in the best interest of public safety. And finally facilitated the implementation of new software that is helping to streamline services. Here are some of the accomplishments of the public works. Retained Brad Brophy of Tri-Lake Consultants as our city engineer. Retained PV maintenance for needed minor public works projects. Designed and installed golf cart crossing signs on Railroad Canyon Road. Power washed the bricks at the Veterans Memorial Park. Submitted required expenditure report for SB 1 funding. Replaced damaged speed radar sign on Railroad Canyon Road. And went out to bid and retain the contractor to complete the Railroad Canyon fence repair project, and the work is to begin this month. Here are some of the accomplishments in regards to public safety. We've transitioned from municipal to non-municipal traditional staffing at Fire Station 60, saving the city an estimated $177,000 in the fiscal year 2019, 2020. Joined other cities in the region in a study to determine the feasibility of forming a new regional police department under a joint powers agreement. Evaluated options and/or alternatives for providing fire protection and emergency medical services. Potentially moving forward with a study to examine the feasibility of starting a city of Canulae fire department. Adopted an ordinance establishing a voluntary EMS subscription program. Currently moving forward with a fee study and establishing implementation options. The city has been preparing to start doing fire life safety inspections in-house beginning in 2020 as a way to better ensure the safety of residents and visitors. Canulae remains an incredibly safe city with very low police and fire call volumes. Now we'll move on to the accomplishments of the administration. Secured participation in the WR cog fellowship program for 2019. Utilized our fellow as much-needed management analyst. Joined the WR cog grant assistance program as a cost-effective way, free, way to track grant opportunities. Implemented updated fees based on fee study completed in 2018. Developed an asset inventory of all property owned by the city. Updated the city's records retention policy. Upgraded all computers and moved to a cloud-based phone system. Implemented new software for business licensing, building department, and planning department services, streamlining process and improving customer service. Updated the city's credit card processing software and policy to simplify the process for customers. Streamlined accounting procedures to eliminate late fees. Updated the city's general planned housing element to govern compliance with the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which is known as RENA, Requirements From the State. Now for the state of the city, our general fund. When it comes to the finances, the city of Canulae runs a very lean operation. With a full-time staff of only five, the city saves a tremendous amount of money by utilizing part-time employees and by contracting for many of the municipal functions that most cities provide in-house. Perhaps the biggest challenge facing the city is the skyrocketing cost of public safety. Fire and police services provided by the city through our contract with Riverside County have increased drastically over the past few years. Since 2014, the amount the county has required the city to budget for providing fire protection and emergency medical services has risen approximately 79%. During the same period of time, the amount the county has required the city to budget for providing police protection has risen approximately 41%. Between police and fire, the city's public safety budget has increased by over $1.5 million over the last, over the past five years, and has now grown to $4.2 million this fiscal year. Remaining fiscally conservative, the city spends just $1.6 million general fund dollars on everything else that we do. However, public safety now consumes 81% of all general fund revenues. And the county executive office has signaled that additional significant increases can be expected in the near future. City revenues, while also growing, have not been able to keep pace with City revenues, while also growing, have not been able to keep pace with the sharply rising public safety costs. Despite healthy revenue from sources such as property tax and the utility user stats, a drastic increase in public safety costs have thrown the city's budget into a structural deficit. If not corrected, the city's budget deficit of nearly six-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars will quickly eat away at our general fund reserves estimated in slightly over four million dollars. All that being said, as you can see on this slide, we were very fortunate to catch a break in the last fiscal year, which ended on June thirtieth. The amount the city was actually billed by the county for police and fire services ended up coming in significantly lower than the numbers ever given to us at the beginning of the fiscal year. While this is not unusual, the degree to which it occurred was definitely an anomaly, so much so that instead of running a deficit of more than five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, we ended up with a surplus of more than two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. While this is fantastic and comes at a good time for us, it is certainly not something we can count on every year moving forward. We were told it was largely due to how the county had overtime, which is something the city has no control over. We have requested the county attempt to be more accurate with the budgets they give us for these contracts. Based on the billing we receive so far, looks like we will likely end up much closer to the budget projections this fiscal year. In fact, last week we received our quarterly invoice from the county for fire protection and emergency medical service, and it was quite possibly the largest single, largest single bill the city has ever received, five-hundred-and-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. That's over a half a million dollars for three months of service. You probably can't read that too well, but these are the budget projections for the current fiscal year, which will end on June thirtieth of next year. As you can see, barring any drastic unexpected savings, we expect to be running a deficit in the general fund of over six-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. As the current budget situation is not sustainable, it is critical that we act swiftly to address the situation. It's imperative that the city's soon-to-be implemented EMS subscription program is successful at offsetting some of these costs. We must continue to evaluate alternatives for providing police and fire services, such as forming our own city fire department, joining with other cities to provide services recently through a joint powers agreement, or contracting with a neighboring city for services. Long-term economic development will play a key role in the city's financial well-being and in our ability to provide a high level of quality services people expect without overburdening residents with excessive taxes and fees. So now we're looking forward. While the city council will meet next month and set goals for 2020, we can safely anticipate that the following will be among our top priorities for the coming year. We want to transition to our new IT service provider, saving the money, saving the city money each month and enhancing service levels, move forward with laser fission order to digitize documents and to allow for better public access, migrate the city's physical servers to the cloud, enhance public engagement, complete new website, engage a social media strategy, regularly submit Friday flyer articles, communicate with residents directly through email and text messages, employ new technologies that track public sentiment on various issues of importance, continue to streamline processes and simplify community access to local government services, sample online business license applications, renewals public documents more easily accessible through the city's website, move forward with implementing the EMS subscription program while finding ways to provide quality public safety services at a cost that is sustainable, continue with economic development initiatives as the long-term solution to realizing economic prosperity and providing high-quality municipal services without overburdening residents with taxes and fees. Now we're getting close to the end. I think this is called conclusion. It is, yes. Twenty nineteen was a year of change and tremendous progress. Budget challenges remain, solutions are actively being sought and implemented. The budget goal to be out of a structural deficit by the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Economic development goals will take time, but the city is positioning itself for future success. The city's relationship with the POA, EVMWD, the county, and other cities in the region are the best they've been in recent memory. City operations are becoming more professional, modernized, and streamlined. The city council and staff strongly believe that the city is now headed in the right direction. Taking everything into consideration, Canyon Lake remains one of the best places to live in Southern California. The state of the city is strong. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for listening patiently, and certainly I suggest that we take at least a five-minute break and help yourself to those coffee and donuts back there. Thank you again.
Mayor, can you just announce the time, please?
I will. It is seven forty-seven.
Thank you.
If I could ask everybody to please take their seats, we're going to convene the meeting or reconvene at seven fifty-nine. Going into the public comments, and if a clerk would be so happy to read the statement for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on the agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter in the council chamber. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the city council. The city council may impose a three-minute limitation upon each person. Any person commenting on an item on the consent calendar or on items not on the agenda may do so now. Any person commenting on a business item or public hearing will be heard at the time that particular item is settled on the agenda. The Brown Act does not allow the city council to discuss matters not on the agenda. Therefore, in response to any person addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the city council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. I have one card. Nancy Horton?
Thank you, council. I thought it was curious that when Mr. Landeroz was giving his report on homelessness, that he didn't tell us how many people are usually assigned to Canyon Lake, nor did anybody ask, which I thought was curious. In the past, it's been usually zero, one, two, it was up to seven one year. We have almost no homelessness that live in Canyon Lake. Yes, people camp underneath the bridge and get road at times. One of the reasons when I served on the city council and as mayor, that we did the MOU with the Bureau of Land Management was a homelessness issue. We were very frightened that we would have large numbers of people congregating in the BLM, especially along the water, which is exactly what Mr. Landeroz said. And so we formed this agreement, and we have our own special enforcement group that goes out there on a regular basis. We see them all the time with our dogs on Saturdays and Sundays. We have not encountered any homeless people for many, many years, and I think it's because they're constantly checked by the people who go out and they see the vehicles, and they're well aware that the city is on top of it. So I think that's really important to know. When you get these generic presentations, it's important to also bring it down right to the level of what's happening in our own city. But then the other thing is, there's a lot being done in Canyon Lake to prevent homelessness, to take food to people who are shut-ins, people who are unable to get out, and they're one missing pension check away from homelessness. So we do this on a regular basis, hoping to keep them in their houses, so they always have some food there in the cupboard if they can't get to the grocery store, we have a rain or whatever. So that's an important thing, too, to understand that Canyon Lake is working on this, not only in our own city, but the seven surrounding cities. We take food to everybody. So that's an important thing. There's one other comment on a different topic. As you are working today, you'll be reorganizing the council and setting up the committees that different people are going to be serving on. There were no committees except for lechwa concerning the lake. And when you did your goal-setting last year, there were no goals regarding the lake. And when I served on the council, I worked really, really hard on helping to educate people about how important Canyon Lake, the lake, is. If we don't fight for this lake, Lake Elsinore will get all the funds for lechwa, because that's the way it's always been. And I've been noticing in the paper that Lake Elsinore has had a number of studies going on over the last summer to look at the water quality and see what they can do. And what do we have? We are just getting, we're re-upped for our alum treatments every year. It's because nobody's fighting for us. Nobody's asking for Wood Environmental to come out and find out what's going on here, how is this happening, what's affecting us right now. So I'd like to see goals for the lake, and I'd like to see at least somebody on the council really pushing hard for funding for Canyon Lake. We need the big bucks. We need the big federal bucks, too, but let's start small. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more cards.
No more cards, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar, please.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Thank you. Council have any items that they'd like to pull from the consent calendar? Bearing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. I believe this involves for a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, I got a motion from Councilmember Bonner and a second from Councilmember Green. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. I guess we're moving on to city council reorganization.
Thank you, mayor. At this time, the council will need to select a mayor and mayor protem for the 2020 calendar year. We'll start with the appointment for mayor. I'll need a motion in a second to appoint someone to the mayor's seat.
I make a mover to make Jordan as a mayor for 2020, twenty-one.
I'll second that. I'm sorry. I'll third it.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Bonner and a second by Councilmember Castillo to appoint Jordan Aaron Krenz to the mayor's seat. I will now conduct a roll call. Please say aye if you agree. Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Aaron Krenz?
Aye.
Jordan Aaron Krenz has been appointed to the mayor's seat. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, fellow council members, for your confidence in me. I look forward to serving once again.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the selection of the mayor protem. I'll need a motion in a second to appoint someone to the mayor protem's seat.
So I have a roll. Go ahead.
A second.
Well, it has occurred to motion.
Motion is to select Mayor Protem Castillo, please.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by Councilmember Smith to appoint Casey Castillo to the mayor protem's seat. I will now conduct a roll call. Please say aye if you agree. Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz?
Aye.
Casey Castillo has been appointed to the mayor protem's seat.
I guess we're going to have to move on to committee assignments at this time.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Okay, so we have here in front of you tonight, we have resolution number 2019 dash forty-seven. This is going to be a resolution re-establishing your city council committees, committee functions, and setting committee meeting dates and times. Staff has reviewed the current resolution and is recommending a revision to the standing We also have as attachment number two, we have the current committee roster, which is the 2019 committee roster. So we have your current committee assignments, and as a separate handout, we have a blank sheet for the proposed 2020 committee agency assignment. So if it's okay with the council, I'm going to go ahead and just go down the list, and if we can have discussion, or if you guys just want to throw names out there, who you would like to sit on each committee, and we'll go from there. Does that work for everyone?
It's fine with me.
Okay, so we'll start with the City of Canyon Lake standing committees. We have the Emergency Preparedness Committee, and we have, currently we have a city staff member, we have Mike Borja on the committee, so we have two open spots. The council would like to appoint someone.
Councilman Green would like to be a winner to that committee.
I'll take that committee.
We need two?
We need two, yes.
It didn't in the past, we had Mike as the alternate. Can we do that?
We can, yes.
Okay, I think that would be good, that Mike.
It's great.
Is there consensus of the council?
Yes.
Thanks, Sue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Finance and Planning Committee. Currently, we have Councilmember Smith and Mayor Protem Castillo. Councilmember Smith, serving as the chair, Mayor Protem Castillo, serving as the member. Do we wish to leave the same, or what does the council wish to do?
Leave it alone. I think it should remain the way it is.
Guess it is, okay. Next, we have listed the current ad hoc committees. We'll start with the Cannabis Committee. Currently, we have Councilmember Green and Councilmember Bonner.
I think we should keep it the way it is.
It'll remain the same then. Good, thank you.
Next, we have the Fire Committee. We have Councilmember Green and Councilmember Smith currently serving.
I think that Larry should go back to RCA as a chair. Unless Jeremy looks.
We're not there yet.
I'm okay serving on that committee with Larry.
Yeah, we'll take that.
Remain the same.
Remain the same.
Next, we have the Veterans Day Committee. Currently, we have Mayor Aaron Krenz, and our chairperson is Vicki Warren. How does the council wish to proceed?
I would love to participate in the Veterans Day Committee.
Chair, will I take Mike, please?
Will you do it with me?
Sure.
Who does the council wish to appoint as the chair?
Well, Vicki Warren is the chair.
No, no, we're taking her off.
Oh, we are.
It's going to be two council members.
Oh, that's what I was asking. Do you want a chair?
Will you work with me?
Of course, with you, what is here?
Sure.
Okay, I'll be delighted to work with you.
So we have Mayor Protem Castillo as the chair and we have Mayor Aaron Krenz as the member. Is that correct?
That's fine, yes.
We'll move on to regional agency assignments. We'll start with Lejua. We need a delegate and an alternate.
I enjoy my time on Lejua. I've been learning a lot and I'd like to teach you.
I think Casey should stay.
Absolutely.
I think she's got, she's getting the background and knowledge.
And I think there's a relationship with the other delegates.
Well, I think you're perfect for the job. We need an alternate as well.
We do need an alternate. Currently, we have Councilmember Bonner serving as the alternate.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Next, we have Move I-15 Through Temecula Valley Task Force. Currently, we have Councilmember Bonner and Councilmember Smith serving.
Just want to serve.
I'm fine with it if Randy is.
You guys want to serve?
Well, I think, Smith, Jeremy, you were the member, right? And I was alternate?
No, we both were the member, Randy.
It says committee member.
Yes, it says. Previously, it said chaired members, but it's just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Remains the same then.
Yep.
Next, we have the Quail Valley Environmental Coalition. We need two members.
Who did it last time?
Currently, I have Mayor Protem Castillo and Councilmember Bonner listed as the members.
They don't meet very often.
They're okay, we're keeping it the same.
Keeping it the same.
Are you okay with it?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yeah.
Next, we have the Regional Conservation Authority. We need a board member to the RCA Board of Directors and then we need an alternate board member.
Yeah, I've been serving on the committee for the last four or five months now. Larry, if you're up for it, I'd love to have you back and then I can alternate for you if you'd like.
Sure, I'll take your man.
Okay.
Thank you.
If that's okay with the rest of the council?
That's fine.
Get the seat warm for you, bud.
Next, we have the RCTC. We need a commissioner and a commissioner alternate.
How's Ben the commissioner and Smith was the alternate? Is that all right?
It's fine with me.
Is that it?
Is that a consensus?
Same.
Okay. Next, we have the Riverside Transit Agency. We need a director and an alternate director.
It's Jeremy, right?
Yeah, I'd love to continue to serve on that one, so.
Yeah. Who's the alternate?
Currently, the alternate is Kiltover Bonner.
Same.
Okay.
Next, we have the Southern California Association of Governments, Energy, and Environment Committee. We need a committee member representing WRCOG. Or I'm sorry, we need a committee member.
Well, I think that was me.
Yes. Is a consensus of the council to have the mayor continue?
Absolutely.
Okay. Next, we have the SCFA, the JPA with Animal Friends. We need a board member and alternate board member.
And who's presently serving?
Currently, we have Councilmember Bonner. Just Councilmember Bonner.
You good with that, Randy?
Yeah.
And then we'll need an alternate board member.
I could be the alternate.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District. We need a trustee and alternate trustee. Currently, we have the mayor and Councilmember Smith.
That's got to be Mr., the mayor, the trustee.
I'm fine with it.
It's good. It's fine, good.
Next, we have the WRCOG Executive Committee. We need a committee member and a committee member alternate. Alternate, sorry.
Well, Jordan, you're the committee member, right? I need to be the alternate like last day.
I thought we did our WRCOG already.
You did it for SCAG.
It was SCAG, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's fine.
Okay.
And you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the end of our committee assignments. I'll be updating the list and providing copies for all of you. So at this time, we will need a motion, I'm sorry.
No, there we go.
We'll need a motion and second from the council in order to approve Resolution Number 2019-47, reestablishing your city council committees, committee functions, and setting committee meeting dates and times.
Excuse me, I make the motion to adopt Resolution 2019-47, committee assignments.
Wait a second. We have a motion and a second.
For this, we can go ahead and just do all in favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Well, thank you all. That was pretty easy. Appreciate all the cooperation. And once again, thank you for your confidence in me. Okay, we're going to move on to item nine, Fire Code Updates.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask our fire consultant, Julie Cousy, to make this presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, my name is Julie Cousy. I'm with Inters- Interwest Consulting Group. And the item before you tonight is the first reading of the adoption of the 2019 California Fire Code along with the findings. This happens every three years. And once the state adopts it, then the city's adopted six months after. So you will see this one more time in your next meeting. Many of the changes that you'll see in your packet are carryovers from the last adoption in 2016. We worked with the County of Riverside to ensure that their changes and their, what they want to change in the code was done and we addressed their concerns. And we also worked with the city attorney to go over to make sure that everything was okay. And that's really the entire presentation, if you have any questions.
Thank you for your advice.
You'll see it again.
Okay, good. Okay, I guess we're going to move on to item number 10.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we'll need a motion and second to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 190.
Sorry, thank you. A little out of myself. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adopt the fire code.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you. And just for the record, we have no public comments on this item.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 190, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Canyon Lake, California, adopting the 2019 California Fire Code as amended as chapter 8.12 of the Canyon Lake Municipal Code.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to item number 10, Economic Development Update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have with us this evening our economic development consultant, Mr. Bill Blankenship. And he's going to come up and give the council a brief update of the work he's been doing, work we've been doing together on economic development.
Good, thank you.
Honorable Mayor, honorable members of the council, honorable staff. It's my pleasure to be here. I'm Bill Blankenship, your economic development consultant. And it's been a great partnership and I've enjoyed, it's already, I think, about three months now that we started the partnership. A little background about myself, I think over the years, I've had the opportunity to meet all of you and in my new role, I've had the opportunity to work with some of you more of recent. For about 20 years, I worked for the Building Industry Association and in the last nine years, I was their CEO, which brought me all over Riverside County advocating for housing and running a nonprofit and a board of directors. Seems driving me crazy. A board of directors. My board were, at the time, were the largest home builders in America. Many of them were division presidents and gave me a great deal of experience on how the development process works. Got me a great deal of experience about how government works. And in my previous life before that, I worked for the California State Legislature, worked for a member of Congress. I was his chief of staff, his district director, helped him get elected into office over the years, helped a lot of other people get elected to office over the years. So kind of had two distinct careers. One, I guess you could say, was politics and the legislature, Assembly, Senate, and Congress. And then almost the last 20 years with the building industry. And now I've embarked on this new life as a consultant and I really appreciate the opportunity to work with Chris, your city manager. He has done a tremendous job for you. You know, I've, over the years, I've gotten to know a lot of city managers that have worked with them and I think what cities are missing and I think you have here is somebody who's not your typical city manager, and I mean that in a respectful way. You know, you have somebody who's willing to think out of the box and who approaches things not always the same way that every other city does. And I think that's what makes your city unique, is this isn't a, this is not your typical city. It's a unique city. And when I had the opportunity to come to work with you folks, Chris took me, we had a couple of sit-down meetings and he took me on a tour behind the gates. And I got to tell you, in all my years, right around West River Side County, I never had the opportunity to go on the other side of the gates. And it's a beautiful city. You guys have a lot to be proud of. And so, where do we go from here? Chris and I, like I said, had several meetings and we talked about some of the needs of the cities. I gave him some of my thoughts. I quickly moved to a due diligence process. But I think normally when you would approach something like the assignment that you folks had given me, you would maybe do a due diligence, but I pretty much knew where I thought I needed to go on your behalf. So I moved, I took the due diligence process and kind of made it an advocacy process, kind of hand in hand. And it led me to meet with the Riverside Conservation Authority, an organization that I had a lot of experience with over the years. In my first years at the BIA, I worked as part of a coalition that formed the MSHCP. So on your behalf, I went and I met with the executive director, deputy executive director, and the acquisition manager, as well as the reserve manager. And we discussed the two parcels, the two BLM parcels that lie within the gate. The first one is 640 acres, you all know that well. We discussed it tonight in various other conversations. And the other one is approximately 160 acres or Jump Lagoon. The RCA identified to me that the Jump Lagoon parcel had approximately 40 acres that they felt was constrained, but the other 120 was not. The other parcel, 640 acre parcel, about 350 to 370 acres of that, they felt was definitely constrained. And the other 271, almost 272 acres, they felt was available for development. That was kind of a good, you know, get acquainted, you know, where do we stand with this? They outlined a process that we would have to go forward. So we've, you folks first took the first steps by sending a letter to the BLM and requesting a transfer of ownership. And that process was the first step. And then they responded back, almost pretty timely, actually, considering the process that lies ahead of us, which isn't going to be so timely. And then talking to the RCA, they pointed out, and I think some of you folks probably know this, that those BLM lands are part of the MSHCP. And so the MSHCP is a multi-species habitat conservation plan. It's going to be 500,000 acres. 150,000 of those acres are privately acquired lands by the RCA, Regional Conservation Authority, and the other 350 fall under public lands. And that term is called PQP. I think it's important to note because over the years or over time, we're going to talk about PQP. So that's public quasi-public lands. Those lands, if you take them out of reserve, and that's what we're requesting the BLM to do, and put them in your ownership or your full stewardship and your control, will have to be replaced and put back in the reserve. And Larry knows that well because he sat on the executive committee at the RCA and that's a hurdle in all candor. You will have to go through the lengthy process of the BLM. And so I had the opportunity to have a meeting with Doug Karamia. And Doug told me that, basically same thing he told your city manager, that this could take up to 10 years. And I said, gee, that's a really long time. That doesn't seem acceptable. He says, well, the Department of Interior has made a priority of all energy projects and solar projects get first preference. We're processing approximately a dozen of those right now. And your request, City of Canyon Lake's request, is number 112 out of 115. He said, however, I believe the Jump Lagoon property or the 160 acres that's there, that parcel, is probably your best play. And I would agree with that. So I think what we discussed all along that we were going to need to have a really good conversation with our good friend Congressman Ken Calvert. And it was going to take that level of interaction and interceding to move this process forward. We had the opportunity to meet with Congressman Calvert and his chief of staff a week and a half ago. We discussed solutions. We outlined to him the hurdle, or the hurdles that you would all have to do. And if you take land out of that PQP, you got to replace it with light land. And it has to be agreed upon by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, by the Riverside Conservation Authority, and Cow Fish and Wildlife Service. Those three agencies are going to have to agree upon that trade. And that's probably going to be a purchase of those lands. And then if you have to buy the lands from the BLM, you know, that's another cost. So all the more reason to get the congressman involved because we really need to acquire this land at the most affordable and cost-effective way, free, it's better. So that's what we're asking for. In meeting with the congressman, we came up with kind of a plan of attack. And the plan of attack was to have a meeting with the BLM, the city, the Riverside Conservation Authority, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and Cow Fish and Wildlife in one meeting. Get them all here, take them on a tour, explain to them the constraints that your city has. Obviously, we need to acquire that land as quickly as possible because we have uses for it. Okay? So that's where we are. And you tasked me to move this forward as quickly as possible. In addition to that, I've been, you know, coming to meetings, I've come to a couple meetings, your EDC, there's a smaller ad hoc group of the POA and the city, I've been participating in those meetings as well. I've had the opportunity to meet with a couple of my old builders and I've talked to them about the good work that we're doing here in Canyon Lake. And I've talked to them about the exciting things that are going on in your city. And I have two builders, you know, very high-level discussions that, you know, this could be an opportunity in the future. I have two builders who said, you know, gee, I'd like to talk to you more when you know what your timeline is. So there will be interest to develop this land and to find a development partner, and I will help you with that because that's my other life, or my old life. So I think there's good news. So, I think there's, there's good news. Obviously, it's a lengthy process, so, you know, the BLM, I think, is, is one strategy that we need to pursue. We've also looked at some of the other parcels on the outside of the gates, about four of them, and talked about some other options, maybe with the golf course and things like that. So, we are looking at other options in addition to the BLM option. It's going to be a lengthy process, no matter how fast we push it, because of the steps that we're going to have to go through. So, you know, I, I think, you know, from here, you know, go forward, you know, we're going to press the BLM, that's, so, so I think the next four steps, we're going to press the BLM to expedite the processing, we're going to go on that track. The second track is, we're going to bring in an environmental consultant. I've had a meeting with an environmental consultant that was recommended by the RCA, and they said, this gentleman is very inexpensive, he's well-respected by the agencies, and he's very user-friendly, and those are all things that we, we would want. So I had an opportunity to talk with this gentleman, and I believe we'll meet with him, and start looking at some options on, once we acquire that BLM property, then what will we acquire as a trade for that PQP status, right? And then the, we're going to pursue the multi-agency meeting with the congressman. I think that's a great idea. We'll do that after the first year, and, and then we're going to just acquire those two parcels, the most cost-effective way we can do it. So those are, I think, the steps going forward, and then the final step would be continuing looking for other opportunities outside of the gate. And I'm excited about the partnership. I thank you all for having faith in me, and it's been very good the last three months, and I look forward to a strong future for all of us.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
No, hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a nice evening.
Very good presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11.
I'll be handling item number 11, Mayor, thank you. Item number 11 is introduction and first reading of ordinance number 191. This is an ordinance for city council discussion and consideration. What this ordinance does is it updates the city manager's purchasing authority that's found in sections 3.08.110 and 3.08.270 of the Canyon Lake Municipal Code to bring it in line with current best practices and the practices of our surrounding communities. Looking at the staff report, you'll see that I performed a survey of the surrounding cities to see what other cities are giving their city managers the purchasing authority to do, keeping in mind that we also meet less frequently than surrounding communities do. So your city manager does have to go longer periods of time in between the opportunity to get your authority to approve contracts. Menifee has it at 50,000, Lake Elsinore has it at 30, Marietta has it at 50, Wildomar has it at 50, and Paris had it at 30 as well. Based off of that, I prepared an ordinance that would update the current municipal code sections to give the city manager purchasing authority up to $50,000, just to be consistent with, with how other people are doing it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it, but it seemed relatively straightforward. You guys have a long meeting, so I'll, I'll stop.
Counsel, any questions?
I do not.
No.
Questions?
No.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, you untied his hands a little more now.
We, we are trying to go through the municipal code, chapter by chapter, to bring things up to date without incurring a significant one-time expense of tackling that all at once.
Thank you. Need a motion on that? Yes, we need a motion on that.
I make a motion to approve introduction and first reading of ordinance 191.
I second. We have a motion and a second, and I believe we need a roll call vote for this.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 191 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, California, amending sections 3.08.110 and 3.08.270 of the municipal code related to the purchasing authority of the city manager.
Thank you. I believe the city manager is going to introduce item number 12.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 12 is the, is relating to the Single Family Residential Rental Registration, Inspection, and Crime-Free Rental Housing Program. This is the ordinance that we discussed at the November meeting conceptually. Staff has taken the comments that were received by, by the council and incorporated those, and the, the result is here before you for first reading this evening, and I'd like to turn it over to city attorney for a more in-depth presentation on this.
Certainly, so.
Mr. City Attorney, before we continue, may I please make the following statement? I need to rekey myself from this particular ordinance because of personal reasons.
Would that be because of a business conflict of interest?
Correct. Because of a business conflict of interest.
Then that would be the appropriate time.
Thank you.
So, moving on to the ordinance that you have in front of you, the ordinance you have in front of you contains two changes from the original draft. The first one addresses a matter that was presented by Councilmember Bonner, which was to make sure that we had under the definition of occupant or tenant, that means any person or persons, because we wanted to make sure that was plural. The second issue that we addressed in part in the revisions here was to make it clear that this ordinance does not in any way authorize or permit the use of a short-term rental in the City of Canyon Lake. In addition to that, I've also drafted a moratorium on short-term rentals within the city, which we plan to bring to the city council at the next city council meeting. The moratorium would go into effect immediately if the council approved it by a four-fifths of a vote. So the moratorium on short-term rentals would actually go into effect before this ordinance is capable of going into effect. So it was the intent of following the direction of the council in a way that was consistent with state zoning law. So, those are the two changes that we've made. Other than that, it is the ordinance that you saw before. And so, once again, I'll try to keep it brief, unless you have any questions.
Nope.
Any public comments on this item?
No public comments.
Apparently we need a motion and a second to approve. Approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 192.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, and I believe we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 192 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, California, adding chapter 5.21 to Title V of the Canyon Lake Municipal Code, establishing a Single Family Residential Rental Registration, Inspection, and Crime-Free Rental Housing Program, with Councilmember Smith abstaining.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 13.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. As the council and the staff continue to explore alternate options for getting our public safety costs under control, we've evaluated a number of options. One of those options that we've discussed and looked at carefully is the potential of starting a city fire department. Back in 2016, consulting company ESCI produced a feasibility study for the city that examined just that. The study was not entirely complete. It was done on a shortened timeframe and a shortened budget, and is now several years old. And so we've reached out to ESCI and asked if they would provide a proposal to update that study and expand upon it. They have gotten back to us, and it looks like they'll be able to, to do just that. I'm expecting, we, we have a proposal in hand. We received it after the publishing of the staff report, and so this staff report is asking for authorization, for staff authorization to negotiate and sign a contract with the, not to exceed a amount of 48,000. The proposal came in under that, it was 45,000 and change, but we left the 48,000 cap just to give us a little buffer in case there are a few unexpected expenses. The proposal does a couple of things, which I think is, is pretty neat. So, we had discussed that we want to do a full feasibility study so that the council will understand if we decide to go down that, that path, what are all of the variables that we need to take into consideration? What are the total costs for startup, for operation, what are the equipment needs? What, what agreements would we have to have with other entities, all of these things? And once we had a feasibility study, then if that looked good, then we'd contract with someone to do a, an implementation plan for us, basically a roadmap, how do we, how do we get a department started? And, and once that implementation plan was done, then that could be handed off to a fire chief who could implement it. So what, what the ESCI proposal suggests is that they do those first two steps all, all in one. So there would be a feasibility study and an implementation plan in one. It would be completed within five to six months, which is fantastic, at a price of forty, a little 45,000 dollars, which reflects quite a bit of savings to the city, taking into account the original work that was done a few years ago. Some of that work is outdated now, but a lot of it can still be utilized, so we, we have some cost savings there. With that, I would just like to ask council's authority to move forward with negotiating and signing agreement with ESCI.
I make a motion to move forward to sign the agreement for the feasibility implementations of.
I second.
Plan with ESCI.
I second.
I'm sorry, I was just informed we have a member of the public that would like to speak on this item?
This item?
Yes. Mr. Wompley?
Yes. I don't have any problem with you going out and getting a survey. It's been done, pretty well, having 50 years in the fire service, I know a couple of things about it. You also have a gentleman on the council that knows about it. But to convince other people that we want to start a little fire department, I would recommend that we have an open session strictly on the information that you get with reference to this proposal. A lot of things, and people are saying this, and they're saying that, and so on, and they're really not giving you the, the full picture. One of, one of them, a proposal is that the people pay for it up front, some people don't, if they don't want to, they don't have to. And they say, well, that works fine. Well, it doesn't work fine for the people, works fine for the city, because they can set the price at anything they want, but you can only have about 65% of the people that are going to sign up for that, so the other 30, 30 people, 30,000 people, or 30, 30, excuse me, 30%, are being covered by the other people, and that happens in the City of Marietta today. But anyway, that, I.
I think you're on a different subject than we are right now.
Well, you're talking about going out for information to start your own fire department. Am I right?
Yes.
And I'm just saying, I'm not against that, but what I'm saying is that I would like to have open sessions, when you get the information, open sessions for everybody to look and see what you have before you make a final decision on it.
Well, perhaps I misunderstood you. I thought you some, thought you were indicating some people might want to participate and others wouldn't, and that's a different subject.
Well, then, I was just explaining a, a situation. I would like to make sure that it's open to, to our entire city.
Okay.
So they can come down, and, and we have a lot of firemen in, in our community, and a lot of experience. We know what works and what don't work, and we would like to be able to discuss it with you before you start making that final decision.
Okay, well, I'm sure the city manager will take all that into consideration.
Okay.
Thank you, Jack. Any other public comments on this?
I have no more requests to speak on this item.
Okay, and then we do require a.
Go back to the, we need a motion.
Yes.
I make, I make a motion to approve.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I just have the council clarify the original motion and second? I didn't get that.
There you go. And I second it.
Okay, thank you.
So that still stands? We don't have to say it again? Good.
Same, same motion, yes, and this requires a roll call vote also.
Yes. Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item number 13.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to item number 14, and it's a public hearing, which is to start at 8:47. We have a staff presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Martin Herblier, a really official, to come make the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we have the second reading and the public hearing for, as required by state law, for the 2019 California Building Codes, which are based on the 2018 International Building Codes. The codes that are not applicable for you is the amendments that exist in it, or amendments that existed in the previous codes, and so there's no, no changes in regards to the amendments. Without filling state commission approval, council can not make amendments other than adopting additional appendices and/or administering things such as, I want additional permit for this or that. So, so it's, it's a little bit restricted on what we can and can't do without, without going through a lengthy process for the City of Canyon Lake. We have a, we have, the couple for you is, is, is very appropriate for our community. It's got some major financial changes to the community. One is a mandatory solar system that's required in the home. There's also, as I discussed with finance committee, there's actually some things that are actually good in the code that's going to help with the city's building stock in the future, being a better quality structures than what they are today, because today you get extensive trade-off for solar systems, and that doesn't exist in the code due to the infrastructure of our utility system in state has realized we have a, have a over-abundance of power being produced at, at a different day for your solar. So, so the industry has actually changed the direction a bit there, and so I recommend the council that they adopt and approve this second reading.
Questions from the council?
No.
Any other testimony by your proponent? Opponents? Okay, response to either one of those. We're closing the public hearing at 8:50. Any discussion by the city council? It's been held easy tonight. We don't need any jabulation or hardening. So we need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of ordinance number 189.
I make a, the motion to approve ordinance number 189, second reading of the Building Code for the City of Canyon Lake.
I second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
You do need to vote, and I would recommend a roll call vote.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the second reading of ordinance number 189.
I second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
We do need a roll call vote.
You do need to vote, and I would recommend a roll call vote.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the second reading of ordinance number 189.
Thank you. It's a sure sale. Okay, well, entertaining comments with the council. Councilmember Bonner.
I went to the monthly RCTC meeting and the committee meeting. Our next roundtable is the City POA Water District, Gama Enforcement, is the 9th of December. And last, and hopefully everyone has a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year. So, that's all.
That covers it all. Thank you. Mayor Protem Castillo.
Well, thank you very much again to my fellow councilmembers for trusting me to be your Mayor Protem going forward. Ledgwick is dark in December. We are gearing up for our summit with Lake Elsinore in April of the next year. During the transition period from Charles Abbott to Interwest, I was able to go as not only the Ledgwick delegate, but also attend the TMTL meetings, which I enjoyed and learned a lot from, I believe. Information that I received during those meetings included the fact that, according to Wood, the scientists, they've decided that our lake has the best water quality that it has had in 40 years. Their focusing, in fact, is on perhaps lessening alum, well, treatments, maybe by specifically an entire treatment. They're going to keep us posted on that. They are focusing perhaps on dredging the East Bay. I know that this community, including Mr. Wamsley and members of the POA, have been very focused on that as a water quality issue, and EVWMD is also now looking at that as a water quality issue where they can perhaps join in and contribute in a way that maybe they previously hadn't been able to participate. Along those lines, our EVWMD director was not able to make it today because she has some family issues, and she had asked me specifically to just give an update, if you don't mind, as part of my comments. She wanted the community to know that the relationship between EVMWD, the city, and the POA are extremely cooperative and have been working on goals together. The Canyon Lake Water Treatment Plant completed production last month. Over 2,400 acre-feet was produced from the beginning of April. That is enough water for over 7,200 families for a year. The water source makes up 10% of our water portfolio, and it's extremely cost-effective, costing a little more than one-third of what is imported. It is scheduled to go back online next April. The Canyon Lake Water Treatment Plan is expected to be refurbished sometime next year, and additional treatment applications are being explored to address taste and odor issues. If you do have taste and odor issues, please contact EVMWD directly. They will send out a certified water operator to sample and investigate the issue. She also sent quite a bit on the POFA and PFA contaminant, but that's maybe a little too much to read at this point, but I did want to highlight the fact that she wanted Canyon Lake to remember that this is first and foremost a drinking water reservoir and one of very few left in the state that allows recreation and body contact. And although lake levels have appeared to be low, that's an inconvenience, but it's necessary. And the system is operating as designated, taking water when we need it, making room for winter storms. She has also said, "If anyone wants to contact her directly, her number is (951) 634-9019," and to say thank you and happy holidays. And then, just on two other notes, I want to thank the fire department for picking up Santa and Mrs. Claus and taking them to the POA tree lighting last week. That was much appreciated. And I am excited to be on the Veterans Day Committee next year. I thought the staff and the committee did a great job, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Green.
Well, it's been quite a year for me, and I've been very fortunate to get back on council. Since I got back on, I really haven't had any committee assignments. Now I do again. So, you will be getting a few reports. I did get the opportunity, and I call it an opportunity, to address the student of the month at Lake Elsinore High School, which are, excuse me, lakeside, but it's for the Elsinore School District, and that is an honor. These kids are very smart. We have two that have been recognized the last two times that are Canyon Lake residents. We invite them to come before council to receive a proclamation, resolution, and recognition for their accomplishments. Our two candidates have not made it, so maybe next month we have another one, and they'll make it. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you, and thank all of you for all your support.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make it brief. I hope everyone had a phenomenal Thanksgiving. Can't believe we're saying it's Christmas already. It's December. It's right in front of us. This year, we got, might correct them wrong, but we were able to do helping hands for the Thanksgiving turkeys, right? So, that was a big success. I know that they were wanting that. We were able to pull that off, and it was a great turnout. Do we know how many turkeys we're giving?
Ninety-one.
Unbelievable. How many were last year?
About 71.
It's growing. That's good. That's good. So, we're doing our part. Hopefully, we can get over 100 next year and continue that, and I was happy they were prepared for that. I get the pleasure of sitting on RTA and RCA for Larry, and he'll be taking that over next year. And obviously, we're coming to the end of the year, so it's all a bit about budgets. And I am pleased to report for both agencies, everything's been very successful. Everything's moving forward. On RTA, the big push is this electric concept. We've got to go all-electric buses by 2030. So, it's a big, big push that we're trying to, you know, learn and do as much as we possibly can, so it's going to be interesting things to report in the upcoming years on how we achieve those goals. And I'm excited about tomorrow's event. We're doing a Winter Wonderland. We've got In-N-Out coming, so come out and get a cheeseburger and hang out with the kids and see a Christmas tree get lit up. I think it's an exciting event, and Mary did a phenomenal job updating us on all the great things that we're doing in this community. So, I just want to say thank you so much to this council. It's been a phenomenal first year on council. I've learned so much, and I can't wait to continue to learn and work with my colleagues. Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. I think it's my turn now. I attended the usual meetings that I do every month. I shouldn't say usual. WRCOG and VCTR, and watched the POA board reading last night, and we've done legal cities meetings, done all the things it's expected us to do. What I'd really like to say is that I can't take credit for reading that long State of the City message that I gave you. It's a composite of probably the greatest council that I've ever had in a long, long time, and I certainly appreciate my fellow council members and appreciate the support that you've given to me, the cohesiveness that we've had this year, it's just been fantastic. The staff, I don't think I can say enough about them. Our city manager, I praised him too much already this year, so I'm not going to do that again, but I really do appreciate it. It has just been a good, good year, and I look forward to next year, perhaps even being better. And with that, I certainly wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and good health to everybody, of course, in the coming year. And with that...
Mr. Mayor?
Ready?
I have one final announcement, if that's okay. We, unless there's any objection, we'd like to schedule the January city council meeting for January 15th because of the holiday. The staff has been planning on that, so if there's no objection, we'd like to make that change for January 15th.
That's perfect. I didn't even have to announce that now.
Very good.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for attending tonight, and I'll proceed everybody soon. We are adjourned at 9:01.